I will now call to order the City-County Council meeting for Monday, April 30, 2018. We'll begin our prayer meeting with the prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. With the President, we have the honor and the duty to present to you this evening the Pastor Larry Bates, who pastors the Community Lifeline Christian Church that give us the prayer. Pastor Bates?
Shall we pray? Oh God, our help in ages past, our hopeful years to come, our shelter from the stormy blast in our eternal home. Our Father, we ask that you would be in this midst of this meeting this night, that your presence would be felt, Lord, that your business would be conducted as it should be. We ask that you would bless every member of this council, every person that's here, every man, woman, boy, and girl that's present. We ask again that your Holy Spirit would be felt as we go through this evening, Lord, and we give you praise, honor, and glory. And it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen?
Amen.
Not a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, leading gentleman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Will all counselors please select your green button to indicate attendance? There are 23 members of the council present. Counselors Jackson and Johnson have asked to be excused for this evening. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and speakers. Guests and visitors. Counselor Feaster?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think my microphone is on. I actually have two. A former counselor and friend, Jackie Nidus, is with us tonight, so I wanted to welcome her. And all of those faces out there that I know from IFD. If you would all stand, please.
Counsel Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome the Covintons, Pastor Covinton and his fabulous first lady.
Counsel Oliver?
Mr. President, there's ministry that takes place in this building often, and I want to acknowledge three pastors. They're with us this evening, doing their job diligently. Tim Lindsay, Matt Barnes, and Carl Herster. Are they here? They're here. Please stand, please. Thank you for all that you do.
Counsel Ray?
Yes, good evening. I'd like to welcome my oldest son, Aiden Ray. If you could please stand.
Counsel Coats?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just hit the green button for reasons I can't explain. Just spoke a minute ago with Local 416 President Hank Harris and just briefly communicated with the Lawrence Chapter President, Andy Ambers. It is with sad news that I report the passing of a Lawrence firefighter. Firefighter Jeff Holt passed away this morning while on duty at Lawrence. So, moment of silence, and if you're so inclined, offer some prayers for him, his brethren in the fire service, and his family, please.
Thank you, Counsel Coats. Counsel Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last but not least, behind every great man, a great woman, the first lady of Larry Bates and the community church with us this evening, Ms. Cynthia Bates. Would you please stand, please? The first lady.
Very good. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City-County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City-County Building in the council chambers on Monday, April 30, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the council. Sincerely, Bob Osalee, President, City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City-County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances. General ordinance numbers 19 through 23. General Resolution numbers 6 through 8. Special Resolution numbers 7 through 11. Joseph H. Hogsett, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent? The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for April 9, 2018. Do I have consent? We will now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. Proposal number 168, introduced by Counselors Adamson, Gray, and Oliver, recognizes retired Indianapolis Fire Department Lieutenant Charles E. Smith.
Mr. President, with permission, I'd like to, or with consent, I'd like to postpone this to the next council meeting as we're still trying to arrange the family members to be able to attend.
Very good. All right. The next item on the agenda is proposal number 188, and that's introduced by Counselors Lewis, McQuillan, Osalee, Adamson, and Oliver, which recognizes Natrina DeBeau for over 12 years of dedicated service to the City-County Council.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a special resolution recognizing former clerk of the council Natrina DeBeau for over 12 years of dedicated service to the City-County Council. Whereas Natrina began her employment with the City-County Council on May 30, 2005, as a constituent services and special projects director, and earned her degree in business administration, master's degree in accounting while working with the council, and, Counsel McQuillan?
I'll just step in front of the honoree. And whereas, Ms. DeBeau increased her professional growth and knowledge in public administration and transitioned to the Assistant Clerk of Personnel and Finance, and also served as the clerk of the Administration and Finance, Economic Development, Public Works, Public Safety, and Criminal Justice, and Rules and Public Policy Committees. And whereas, recognized for her exceptional leadership, proficiency, and attention to detail, unwavering work ethic, and passion for helping others, the council elected Ms. DeBeau on January 9, 2012, as clerk of the council, making her the first African-American woman to serve in this position, and? Whereas, recognized for her exceptional leadership, proficiency, and attention to detail, unwavering work ethic, and passion for helping others, the council elected, oh, that's, we've already done that one. You told me the wrong place. Whereas, during her tenure as council clerk, Ms. DeBeau exhibited profound professionalism in working with counselors, elected officials, and city-county agency leaders, and staff, as well as many other community businesses and organizations. She demonstrated innovative thinking in spearheading the development and implementation of the council's new voting and legislative management systems, and consistently exemplified servant leadership as she worked with council staff to ensure that the needs of counselors, constituents, and visitors were efficiently and effectively addressed in a timely manner. And whereas, after nearly 13 years with the City-County Council, six of which were served as the clerk of the council, Ms. DeBeau transitioned to a new role in public service that will further her professional development and afford her valuable time with her husband and four children. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana?
Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes Natrina DeBeau for over 12 years of dedication and meritorious service to the City-County Council, all City-County enterprise, and the City of Indianapolis. Section 2, the council wholeheartedly thanks Ms. DeBeau for her diligence, and although she has not gone far, her daily presence in the council office will be missed.
Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu, which he has done. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance of IC 36-3-4-14. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a special gift that Counsel Oliver is going to present to Natrina DeBeau, and I just want to take a personal point to say thank you to Natrina for all of your hard work and your commitment to our city, and we know you're not going far. So, please don't forget, where are you at? Please don't forget us. Counsel Oliver? You want to take it out the box? Yes, sir? Maybe not? Thank you. Mr. President, with your permission, I would like to ask Natrina if she wants to share her few words with us?
Please proceed.
Thank you, Counsel Lewis, President Osalee, and counselors. I am so very grateful for all of the time and the experience that I was able to gain during my time with the council. I thank my husband and my children, and all of my family, for all of their support over the nearly 13 years. The work of the council is very important, and it was awesome to be a part of that work that helps to make this city even greater. And I just, again, I'm just thankful.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 189, introduced by Counselors Scales and Feaster, recognizes the achievements and career of Lieutenant Bonnie Hensley upon her retirement from the Indianapolis Fire Department.
All firefighters, friends, and family, please come up to the podium.
Good evening. First, a few words. I believe we can all agree that firefighters are a special class of people. They have answered a call, not just to a profession, but a call to respond to danger, to saving lives, to risking the sacrifice of their own lives by saving the lives of others. It takes courage to be a firefighter, and for the first few women to break into the male-dominated firefighting field, including IFD, extra courage was needed to survive the initial skepticism and derision they faced from many of their fellow male colleagues. I can only imagine what the first female firefighters encountered when they sought to share the firehouse previously inhabited by only alpha male firefighters. But I'm sure we can get many stories about that. Today, we are honoring the service of a trailblazing female firefighter who joined IFD within the first five years of IFD's accepting of women recruits. Lieutenant Bonnie Hensley was not only part of a group of early female firefighters with IFD. Her true strength and endurance is demonstrated in the length of her career. Lieutenant Hensley's initial tenacity shown in joining IFD developed into a 35-year tenure, which makes her the longest-serving female firefighter in IFD history. Lieutenant Hensley, today we celebrate your career with and retirement from IFD. We recognize your commitment to service, as well as you having served as a role model to other women by opening their eyes to the possibility of a firefighting career. We know great strides have been made so that the time when female firefighters were a rarity has been transformed to where women in IFD are accepted without a second thought. For your service within IFD and for the inspiration you've provided to others, the City-County Council of Indianapolis honors you today with this special resolution. A special resolution recognizing the achievements and career of Lieutenant Bonnie Hensley upon her retirement from the Indianapolis Fire Department.
Whereas Lieutenant Hensley was hired within the first five years that IFD began hiring female firefighters. On May 8, 2018, Lieutenant Hensley will retire from the department with the distinction as the longest-serving female in a male-dominated profession and department. And whereas Lieutenant Hensley began her firefighting career in 1983, and after having graduated from DePaul University. Lieutenant Hensley's firefighting career has been a distinguished one, filled with accomplishments and recognition for outstanding service, and?
And whereas Lieutenant Hensley worked many years as a frontline firefighter, she also served in several executive capacities, such as Director of the Survive Alive Program as a public information officer, helped organize and execute details needed to host 35,000 attendees visiting the annual firefighter department instructors conference held annually in Indianapolis, and served in executive-level positions with the Indianapolis Professional Firefighters Union Local 416, and?
Whereas the excellence with which Lieutenant Hensley performed these responsibilities merited recognition through the bestowing of honors. In 2002, the Hospitality Industry and Indiana Convention and Visitors Bureau awarded Lieutenant Hensley the Rose Award for Service Excellence. Lieutenant Hensley's organizational skills and friendly Hoosier hospitality also earned her the FDIC's prestigious Service Award. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana?
Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes Lieutenant Bonnie Hensley for her 35 years of service to the Indianapolis Fire Department. Section 2, the council congratulates Lieutenant Hensley on her years spent serving the department and her community, and for the example she set and the path she forged for other women when female firefighters were few. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofu. And section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 36-3-4-14. And, Mr. President, I so move.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries back to the speakers.
This is the incredible Lieutenant Bonnie Hensley whom we're honoring today. Would you like to say a few words for us, please? Just a couple, if you don't?
Thank you. I was brought here under false pretenses. But I am happy to have the chance to say aye. It has been a pleasure and an honor to serve for IFD and the City of Indianapolis. And I'm still a little bit surprised. So, thank you all so much, and thanks to all my family and friends who showed up tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your service. Sorry, Mr. Hanifey.
I'll be very brief. I do want to make, I'm Tom Hanifey. I'm president of Professional Firefighters of Indiana, and I've worked with Bonnie all her 35 years. And she had, Monroe, do you want to say something first? And Monroe wanted to make a presentation. The second presentation is from her son Addison, who came. And it's, I want to, that's right. That's right. That's true love. I know, I will. Everything we do, everything we do in life is about family. And Bonnie has been an integral part of the Indianapolis Fire Department family, the extended family. And I should mention that Chief Malone's not here because he had a death in the family, or he would certainly be doing this, and by the way, doing a much better job. But, anyway, hard crowd. Anyway, but when I say family, Bonnie's son, Addison, is here. And you know, when your child, son, or daughter follows in your footsteps, it's the greatest compliment for a parent. And Addison is now, is a member of the Indianapolis Fire Department family, a successful firefighter. And Bonnie is so proud and happy, and that's why she looks so young after all this service. So, congratulations to Bonnie Webb on behalf of all her, Bonnie Hensley, thank you. Bonnie Hensley, the good name. And just, we're all proud and thank you to this body for recognizing her service. And I wouldn't, I have to mention two people that did meant to you. Retired chief, retired captain, Valley High, and Nancy Rasmussen, who was the chief, retired battalion chief. And they did a lot, and they worked together. And these were groundbreaking and forged a way to make the fire department, Indianapolis Fire Department, the best fire department in the country because of the way we hire and trying to make our fire department represent our great community of Indianapolis, and we're proud of that. And Bonnie was a big part of that. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
All right, the next item on our agenda is proposal number 69, referred to Municipal Corporations Committee. Counselor Gray?
Can't take him nowhere.
Counsel Gray?
I'll start all over, Mr. President. With consent, Mr. President, I would like to take proposal number 69 and 92 together. First, I have an amendment for proposal number 69, and the proposal, the amendment is, on proposal 69, I move to amend section 2 of proposal number 69, 2018, to change the term date by deleting the language that is stricken through and adding the language that is underlined to read as follows. The reappointment made by this resolution is for the term ending December 31, 2021, pertinent to IC 3612-16 and IC 3612-18. The person appointed by this resolution shall serve the pleasure of the council until his or her successor is appointed and qualified, unless the duration of the holdover period for this office is limited by statute.
Okay, the motion has, the motion for the amendment has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Very good. That motion carries with a vote of 23 to 0. Counselor Gray?
Proposal number 92, reappoints Maggie Lewis to the Captain Improvement Board of Managers. Maggie, Counsel Lewis was not at the meeting, but in the municipal corporations meeting, we do not always require that the person being reappointed be in attendance. There were several questions asked about Mrs. Counsel Lewis, one being how many meetings had she attended? And the answer was that she had been at 90% or better of all the meetings. Therefore, it was motion by Counsel LeKisha to pass to the full council with a full-pass recommendation, with a do-pass recommendation, and the vote was eight to nothing. And, Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we will proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries with a vote of 22 to 1. Proposal, the next item on our agenda is proposal 113, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Counselor Lewis? Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Counsel Oliver? Counsel Gray? All right, the motion carries with a vote of 23 to 0. The next item on the agenda is proposal number 132, referred to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Counsel Robin? Counsel Lewis, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. With permission, I'd like to take proposals number 132, 133, and 134 together. Thank you. Proposal number 132 confirms the mayor's appointment of nominee Craig Hartser to the City-County Ethics Commission. The proposal passed by a vote of 8 to 0. Proposal number 133 confirms the mayor's appointment of Matt Kotjivar, and I apologize if that's not correct, to the City-County Council Ethics Commission. And proposal number 134 confirms the mayor's appointment of Denise Lee, Dennis Lee, to the City-County Ethics Commission, and that passed by a vote of 8 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
The motions have been properly moved and seconded. Comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries with a vote of 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 147, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee met on April 18, 2018. We heard proposal 147, 2018. We heard proposal 147, 2018, which appoints Gregory A. Stowers Jr. to the Board of Public Health and Safety. Proposal passed out of committee, 8 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed now to the board for our vote. Motion carries with a vote of 23 to 0. Proposal number 1, the next item on our agenda is proposal number 150, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 150 appoints Alpha Blackburn to the Metropolitan Development Commission. Ms. Blackburn appeared before the committee on Monday, April 23, to seek appointment and answer questions. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll now proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 151, introduced by Counselor Simpson, refer to the Administration and Finance Committee, determines the need to lease 67,177 square feet of space at 151 North Delaware Street for the use by the Marion County Public Defender Agency. Proposal numbers 152 through 155 all refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal 152, introduced by Counselor Adamson, approves the statement of benefits for Marquis Audio Visual Inc. to allow tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal number 151, introduced by Counselor Scales, amends the declaratory resolution for the 96th Street Castleton Economic Development Area and allocation area by removing certain real estate, by removing certain real estate from the allocation area. Proposal number 151, also introduced by Counselor Scales, amends the declaratory resolution for the 96th Street Castleton Economic Development Area and plan to create a new allocation area within the economic development area. Proposal number 151, introduced by Counselor Lewis, amends portions of the code to clarify incorrect errors in the language of the consolidated zoning and the subdivision control ordinance. Proposals number 156 and 157 both refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee and were introduced by Counsel Robinson. Proposal number 156 approves a transfer and additional appropriation of $180,000 each in the 2018 budget of the Marion County Sheriff's Department, County General, and cumulative capital improvement funds to purchase two body scanners. Proposal number 157 approves transfers of appropriations totaling $437,500 in the 2018 budget of the Marion County Community Corrections Agency, County General and State General Funds to purchase supplies and equipment for the DeValle Residential Work Release Facility. Proposals numbers 158 through 166 all refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 158, introduced by Counsel Crider, approves an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city, the city of Indianapolis and the city of Greenwood for the financing, design, construction, and improvement to the intersection of County Line Road and Madison Avenue. Proposal number 159, introduced by counselors McHenry and Lewis, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in various subdivisions within the Eagledale area founded by Lafayette Road, 38th Street, High School Road, and 25th Street in districts 6 and 10. Proposal number 160, introduced by Counselor Cordy, introduces, authorizes intersections controls at Chester Hill Way and Lane, St. Clifford Court and Drive, and Sotheby Drive in District 18. Proposal number 161, introduced by Counsel Fanning, authorizes intersection controls at Burlington Avenue and Douglas Road in District 2. Proposal number 162, also introduced by Counsel Fanning, authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Donbury Neighborhood in District 2. Proposal number 163, introduced by Counselor Adamson, authorizes intersection controls at Dearborn Street and 28th Street in District 17. Proposal number 161, I mean 164, introduced by Counsel Jackson, authorizes intersection controls on Ara, Parahoe, sorry, Drive and Blackfoot Drive, at Blackfoot Drive and Lone Worth Drive, East and West, in District 14. Proposal number 165, introduced by Counsel McHenry, authorizes parking restrictions in the Island subdivision in District 6. Proposal number 166, introduced by Counsel Oliver, authorizes intersection controls at Woodland Avenue and Fairfield Avenue, Fairfield Avenue in District 9. Proposal number 167, introduced by counselors Holliday and Evans, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, appoints Amanda Gilliland to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Decatur Township Comprehensive Plan. Proposal number 187, introduced by Counsel Johnson, refer to the Education Committee, amends the code to reflect the creation of a new education committee as a standing committee of the council with regard to the oversight of the Indianapolis pre-K program. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders, Priority Business. Proposal numbers 169 through 186 are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on April 19, 2018. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders, Public Hearing. And the next item on that agenda is proposal number 117, refer to Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 117 was at the Municipal Corporation Committee meeting on Wednesday, April 11, 2018. Proposal number 116, which approves the issuance of general obligation bonds in the original aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5 million for the Indianapolis Marion County Library to fund and integrate library system, automatic starters, part of startup collections, materials for new branches, and facility improvement. There were several questions going back and forth on proposal number 116. One of them was concerned about the minimum pay being a municipal corporation, the $13 an hour. And Mrs. Anita said that the, all the people at the library at this time was at the $13 hour except for about 100, 100 people, and they would be coming up in this next budget hearing to be at the $13 an hour. It was voted out of committee, 6 to nothing, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal 117? Very good. Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. We will now proceed to Special Orders, Unfinished Business. There is no business under Special Orders. Unfinished Business, we will now proceed to Special Orders' final adoption. And the next item on our agenda is proposal number 114, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 114 approves transfers totaling $1,270,000 in the 2018 budget of the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services, the Consolidated County Fund, to purchase and equip 50 vehicles. Brian Madison, Department of Business and Neighborhood Services interim director, stated that within the confines of their existing budget, they feel that they will be able to pay for replacement vehicles. He stated that the contract with the Vision Fleet is coming to a conclusion, and with the termination of that agreement, they will need to be prepared to bring new vehicles to, to bring in new vehicles to our system. Mr. President, the proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0. I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Counsel Malory. Motion carries 22 to 1. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 115, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 115 approves a statement of benefits of ISVAL USA Inc., an applicant of tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Mr. Nikili, ISVAL USA Inc. Vice President gave a brief overview of his company. ISVAL is an Italian manufacturer. The company was founded in 1952 and today is still owned and managed by the same family now with the third generation. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 22 to 1. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 116, refer to Municipal Corporations Committee. Chairman Gray.
Yes, Mr. President. 116 was heard in municipal corporation on the same day that we heard proposal 69. Proposal 116 is like a sister proposal to 69, wherein 69, we issued the bonds in numbers. Proposal 116, we give them the opportunity to spend the money. And this is the same issue, they're going to spend the money on a new library system, automatic starters, startup collection materials for new branches and facilities improved. The Jack Anita's and the CFO gave us an in-detail presentation of all the things that they was going to do, and also gave us a little update on where the new library systems are today. We opened a new, we broke ground on the library at Washington Township. We broke the ground at the Pike Township, and we're going to be breaking ground soon on the Brightwood Northwood. So, Mr. President, the proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 6 to nothing, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 118, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee met on April 18, 2018. Heard proposal 118, 2018, which amended the code to provide for a Marion Superior Court Domestic Relations Counseling Bureau non-reverting fund. Judge Cynthia Ayers stated that they are asking for the council to approve an ordinance to provide for an adoption of a non-reverting fund for Domestic Relations Counseling Bureau. The code requires that if the judge agrees that they have a Domestic Relations Counseling Bureau, the charges fees must be approved by the council. Chairman Robinson asked Mr. Beasley if the committee could go ahead and discuss proposal 119, or should they wait and do separately? Mr. Beasley said they could discuss them both together. This 119 was approved for the fee schedule for the domestic, I'm sorry. That motion was carried, Mr. President, by motion of 8 to 10 to 0. I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal 119, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the companion proposal of 118. This is proposal 119, which approves the fee schedule for the Domestic Relations Counseling Bureau adopted by the Marion Superior Court. Chairman Robinson asked if Judge Ayers can explain the process. She said that this is a local rule, and it was passed by the judges, and the statute requires that they pass this rule before they ask for a fee schedule. Counselor Simpson moved, seconded by Counsel Oliver, to send proposal 118 and 119 to the full council. They do pass the recommendation. They both passed with emotion, I'm sorry, they both carried with their motion vote of 10 to 0. I so move.
The motion isn't properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 121, refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals 121, 130. Thank you. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, April 19, and heard the following proposals. Proposal 121 authorizes parking restrictions on East Street and Fort Wayne in District 17. Proposal 121 authorizes intersection controls at Farley Drive and 16th Street in District 15. Proposal 123 authorizes the removal of parking restrictions on Washington Boulevard between 28th and 30th Streets in District 9. Proposal 124 authorizes intersection controls throughout the Park Place subdivision in District 23. Proposal number 125 authorizes intersection controls at Dunlap Avenue and Miller Street in District 22. Proposal number 126 authorizes intersection controls at Edmondson Avenue between 42nd and 46th Street in District 13. Proposal 127 authorizes intersection controls at Harvest Avenue and 34th Street in District 13. Proposal number 128 authorizes intersection controls at Hillcrest Drive and Hillcrest Court in District 24. Proposal number 129 authorizes intersection controls at Keystone Avenue and St. Clair Street in District 17. And proposal number 130 authorizes a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Mueller Estates at Wind Farms, District 18. All the previous proposals passed out of the committee with a vote of 8 to 0, and I so move.
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 131, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 131 designates Eastern Avenue between 25th Street and 30th Street as the Jenny Yarborough Foster Memorial Way. Ms. Marshall Nick stated that Jenny Yarborough Foster is her grandmother, and that she grew up watching her build two churches and the growing community around the churches. Mrs. Mary Glitz, great-granddaughter, stated that it is a legacy of her great-grandmother who was instrumental in clothing and feeding many children, as well as furnishing and renovating homes of their parents in the Brightwood community and other cities through, and other cities throughout the country. She thanked the committee for considering the designation. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 10 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Counselor Gray.
Yes, Mr. President. I'm very glad to see this, this name after Mrs. Foster, because as a young man, I was an apprentice on, with Mr. Alvin Hindon when we built this church there on Eastern Avenue. And it's been one of my favorite places ever since then to take my grandkids and stuff by there and let them see the, the part of the church that we built. So, I will be voting for. So, I will be voting for this to become Mrs. Foster's way.
Thank you very much. Let us proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries twenty-three to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one-four-six. Refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number one-forty-six authorizes the issuance of Economic Development Revenue Refunding Bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty million to refund or purchase in a whole or in part the outstanding bonds which were used to refinance the acquisition, construction, and equipment of an apartment complex known as Brookhaven... Excuse me, Brookhaven at County Line Apartments, which consist of two-hundred and seventy-one apartment units located at nine-forty Wild Indigo Lane, District Twenty-three, I believe that's Counsel Crider's district, including refunding costs and approves the authorization of other actions in respect thereof. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of ten to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries twenty-three to zero. There is no business under special service district councils, and there is no business under new business. The next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The docketed agenda for this meeting of council, having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Counsel McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. By Counselors Cordy and Miller in memory of Clifton Sharp. By Counselor McQuillan in memory of Catherine Longnecker and Bill Fiant. By Counselors Crider, McQuillan, Cordy, and Coats in memory of Judge Patricia Gifford. By Counselor Lewis in memory of Wilma Moore. By Counsel Osalee in memory of Robert LaRue. By Counselor Cordy in memory of Bonnie Mickelson. By Counselor Feaster in memory of Gregory Thompson. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request the motion to be made a part of the permanent record of this body and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counsel McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we adjourned.